Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, and this meeting is called to order. Tonight's invocation is by Pastor Aaron Cobb of the Spiritual Church of Christ.
Michael. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity together today. Grant wisdom and clarity to our mayor, city staff, and council members as they lead and deliberate, unite their hearts and minds in common purpose, so they may work together effectively and with humility, guide their discussions and decisions, that they may be just, honorable, and serve the highest good of our community. We ask for your grace to govern with integrity and compassion, bring in order and prosperity to our city. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Here. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Moving on to community updates. The first update is from Lincoln Elementary School Principal Katie Jobson. One of the many great things about Ward 1 is we have two schools in Ward 1, the high school and Lincoln School, where I did my student teaching. So it's great to have Mrs. Jobson here to give us an update.
Well, thank you very much for having me tonight. I know, Annie, you know about Lincoln a little bit, and Wendy, I know you're a Lincoln person. Some of you may not have been in Lincoln for a while, or if at all, and so I appreciate the opportunity to just tell you a little bit about Lincoln and what's been going on with us. We are just down the street here, on the other side of the construction here, and we are in a building that's been renovated recently. A couple of years ago, this community approved a bond, and we were able to do some good upgrades to our infrastructure in the building. It's been around for a while, and so we're glad to have it spruced up a little bit for our current students. I think some of the favorite parts, from our student standpoint, are upgrades to our library. We've got some new furniture that they really like, and our cafeteria got some new seating. So you probably remember those really long benches of tables, maybe even from when you were in school. And we now have some cute little booths and some small round tables, and it's a little bit more of a cozy feel in our cafeteria, and that's a nice thing for us because it creates some more community for our students. And I think that's one of the things Lincoln is about, is really about creating community. Our staff really prides ourselves in trying to get to know every student and getting to know the things that they like and the things that make them happy to be at school and support one another in that. A few other things going on. We just started school here this last week, so it's been a bit of a whirlwind. We've got 243. I don't know if I'm doing something. We've got 243 students there right now with us, and we are a kindergarten through third grade building, but we actually have some preschool programs that are not South Haven Public Schools programs, but they're housed in our building. And so we have the Great Start Readiness Program that is a preschool. And then we also have new this year, a couple of Head Start rooms that are going to be housed in Lincoln, and that's a nice opportunity for us to get to know some of our youngest learners who might be coming through our doors in our kindergarten programs. They will start next week. We started this past week, and we spent some time with students, helping them to get to know a little bit about what we're asking of them at school, like how do you go through the cafeteria? This is new for some students, and helping them know what our expectations are, because we really want to catch kids doing the right thing and reward them for that, instead of having to always correct them with the negative side of things. So we participate in something called Positive Behavior Interventions and Support, so kids get to earn some points when they make good choices through the day. And every month, we do some big celebrations to celebrate what they've done, and they spend those points shopping for items, pizza lunches, pumpkin painting. Sometimes we invite special guests, like we had the Outdoor Discovery Center come out and share some animals with them, which they're very excited to learn about and get to touch. So we try to find good things to celebrate in our kids all the time and do that by being really intentional. We also have some great staff. Some of you probably recognize community members that have been around for a while. We have people that have spent their whole careers at Lincoln, and that's a really neat thing to be able to do, that it's such a great place that people want to stay. But we also have some fresh faces that have come in and brought some new energy and some new life into the building, and so they bring their best every day. But there are some staff members that aren't, you know, you think of school, you think of teachers, but we have some other people that have been really key to what we are able to offer students. We've got two success coaches, and they do kind of all the things that, I don't know, are kind of the extras. So they make sure that there is a warm coat for a student that doesn't have one in the winter. They make sure students are there, you know, with good attendance, and if there's a problem getting them to school, they're out driving to pick up kids or work through issues with adults in their lives so they can be at school. We were celebrating 96% of our students being at school this last week, which is a really big thing. Since COVID, it's been hard to get kids to school. That's kind of shifted, and so we've been working really hard to help get rid of things that are barriers to students getting to school, and our success coaches do that. They also go in and teach classes each week, lessons about how to get yourself calm if you're worried about a big test, like thinking positive thoughts and taking deep breaths, and also things like, how do I get along with a new friend on the playground? And some of those things help kids feel more confident at school, even though they're not all academic related. We do have some really great academic things going on, too. We offer small group instruction for what I need every day in math and reading, so that we're making sure we're either challenging kids if they're ready for the next level or helping them if they're not quite there yet. And so that's something that we feel really strongly about, meeting kids where they're at, and we feel like that's a good way to do that. We also have a full inclusion classroom at Lincoln. That means students who have IEPs, that require special education supports. We have a teacher that partners directly with a kindergarten classroom teacher and is right there, so they get the benefit of two teachers in one classroom, really helping them set the stage for future success by taking care of needs really early on for our kindergartners, and we're proud of that. We are excited about some of our partnerships with our community. This year, we are bringing in Kids Hope. It was at Lincoln a while ago, and kind of, we lost it during COVID, and it's coming back. Life Bridge Church is going to partner with us and offer mentors for some of our students who just need an encourager or cheerleader or someone to sit down and talk to them every week and listen to their story. We did a program called Challenge Accepted Program to challenge our third graders who were excelling in school, and we partnered with the Liberty Hyde Bailey Museum, with the South Haven Center for the Arts, and with the library to offer some different programs that were each eight weeks long, and they traveled there and worked with professionals in those different community areas. And so that was really neat, to get our kids out in the community and partnering with people and do something unique that really worked to some of their strengths. We also had the chance to do a 5K run for our Girls on the Run and celebrate girls in building self-esteem, and they culminated in this 5K run, and 22 girls participated. 21 of them completed that run, which was a really big deal. One of them had been injured, not even the Girls on the Run injury, but something else, and so couldn't complete it. But we were really proud to offer another avenue to help kids feel confident about themselves and accomplish something big. So those are just some of the things going on at Lincoln. If you want to sit down and you'd be interested ever in learning more about it or coming and visit, I'd welcome that, and I could take any questions that anyone might have. Yes.
I just have one quick question. What did you say the population?
What is that? We have about 243 students right now. That's not including the preschoolers that are in our building.
Can I ask a question? Is there any concern about the funding for things like the success coaches right now?
There's a lot up in the air right now with funding, so the school is kind of sitting, you know, waiting to see how things play out, and obviously, we've had to make some commitments so far this year to say we're going to continue with people and programs, so we've done that. But obviously, yeah, there's concern about what, where is some of that funding coming from? We're waiting on the state, and we're waiting on, you know, the federal government to make some decisions about what's happening with funding for multiple programs, and so that's hard.
Yeah. And I just wanted to add that I think they've made such a big difference in the schools, and I just love seeing how inclusive it is and the environment that you've helped create there, so thank you for all your work.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We've got a great staff, and so kudos to them for the work they do.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me tonight. Enjoy your evening.
Next, we have a lifesaving award to be presented to Officer Cooper Carnes.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to bring Officer Carnes up here. Mr. Thomas Capps kind of stole my thunder a couple of weeks ago, and he brought it up, but here we are. So Cooper Carnes, on July 31st, 2025, he responded to 8039 M140, which is the Village Express Car Wash for a one-car accident. Arriving on scene, Officer Carnes found a 74-year-old male unresponsive in the driver's seat of a Ford pickup. He quickly assessed the driver and determined he did not have a pulse. He and a bystander were able to get the male out of the truck and laid him on the ground. Immediately began, Officer Carnes immediately began performing CPR on the male victim. South Haven Area Emergency Services arrived, and Officer Carnes continued with CPR until an AED shock was delivered and the victim regained a heartbeat. Executive Director of Shays, Brandon Hins, stated that Officer Carnes' calm and decisive actions in a high-pressure situation exemplify his professionalism, his preparedness, and his commitment to public service. Officer Carnes' swift evaluation and immediate response undoubtedly played a critical role in the positive outcome of this patient. It is my honor to present South Haven Police Department Lifesaving Award to Officer Cooper Carnes for his actions on July 31st, 2025.
Thank you so much. Moving on to public comment for items. Yep, Chris is not here with us tonight. Public comment for items on the agenda excluding items scheduled for public hearing, and you have up to five minutes. If there's no comments, I can see you now. We will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through D?
I move to approve items A through D.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, just with regard to D for the treatment, is that... So just, we hear about migration and things like that. Is it applied at a time to have the least negative impact on the insects and migrating, butterflies, birds, et cetera?
I believe that the, this is planned for a time when this has the least amount of impact. Dana, can you assist with that?
Yeah, the applications are typically applied in the fall. I know Vayner County Road Commission is doing their application this time of year. I would have to talk directly with the applicator to answer your specific question about migratory, but it's commonly applied in the fall.
Okay, thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Arnold.
Yes.
Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
And Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to new business number nine. The city council will be asked to consider approval of the special event application 2025-41 Tractor Cruise Parade from the Michigan Flywheelers Museum on Phoenix Street to South Beach to be held on Thursday, September 24th, 2025, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion to approve that special event?
I move to approve the special event application 2025-41 Tractor Cruise Parade from the Michigan Flywheelers Museum, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll second it.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, the city council will be asked to, number one, introduce an ordinance adopting the 2021 edition of the International Fire Code, and two, set the proposed ordinance for a public hearing to occur on September 15th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. at City Hall. Is there a motion?
I move to introduce an ordinance adopting the 2021 edition of the International Fire Code. I'm assuming we have to separate them?
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That motion passes. Moving on to number two.
I move to approve the proposed ordinance for the public hearing occurring on September 15th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in City Hall.
Second.
Any discussion?
Kate, per the email, because I just, our timing didn't work out to talk ahead of time, the proposed amendments that have been added are not clear. It appears some might be completely new, some might be amended, so I would request that when it is set for the public hearing, that the attract changes identify what actually is being added, amended, from what the fire code has, because that's what the, that appears to be where most of the changes are.
Did you have a comment?
I think we both have a comment. So this, this has been a request from Shays. The three other municipalities have adopted the 2021 Fire Code. This is to assist with the adopted 2021 building codes that we've adopted by resolution, I'm sorry, by ordinance. And this is coming to us from Shays, so there's been some things that we've conferred with them on, but as for attract changes, we're adopting the code that's been promulgated.
That's correct. The way this ordinance is formatted, it is formatted in the traditional manner that ordinances are formatted when adopting a code such as the Fire Code and making some small changes. So if, for example, the city was to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code, the ordinance would be set forth in the same manner. Of course, if there's questions regarding the, you know, we're happy to answer those, but I do want to reinforce that this is consistent with standard good practice.
Just so you know. If, if any of you get very far from the mic, you are not picked up on the mic. Right, but as I pointed out to Kate, I mean, one part says to read as amended, but it's currently in our code, so there doesn't appear to be any change to it.
So just as we have done in every other ordinance, I believe that our office has worked on, when we adopt the ordinance, we open up the whole section, and those parts of the ordinance that are there, to which there is no change, are left unchanged. Those parts of the ordinance to what are being deleted, there is a strike through, and those parts of the ordinance which are being added, it is bolded.
Correct, and...
Which is what has happened here.
Correct, but you also said to, amended to read as, and nothing's been changed, so I believe that phrase needs to be deleted.
That's incorrect. So what this is, you have adopted, the first part says, we're adopting the Fire Code, subject to the modifications set forth in this article. The next section goes down and says, Section 101 of the Fire Code, insert City of South Haven. That's not bolded, because that's already in our current ordinance. The part that amends Section 103, it amends Section 103 of the Fire Code to read as it is set forth in the draft ordinance.
Thank you. Megan, could we have a roll call, please, on number two?
Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
And Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, the city council will be asked to receive an update from Assistant City Manager Michael Landis regarding efforts on the city council priority for housing development.
Thank you. I'm going to be stepping into this role today. Michael Landis is coming back from Las Vegas and was not able to join us today. We have put together a number of updates on our housing initiatives. As council knows, housing is one of our priorities. We do know that we've just recently extended the Hales Plan Unit Development, and we've also had some progress on Dwelling Place. Not the progress that we're wanting, but in here, contained in this staff report, is an update on the Overton site, which is, we are continuing to work with Dwelling Place. They are still looking at the site. They plan to do some outreach with the neighborhood in October, September, October, so look for those invitations out there. We have been continuing to work with South Haven Charter Township. They have approved a number of PUDs and also housing initiatives that have been detailed in this report. As we know, the Trailside development is ongoing, and they've got a number of houses that have been started. They have a number of houses to continue, and then they have a plan for a second phase that has yet to go to the Planning Commission. So we have a number of units that are coming online in the area, so that's good news for us as well as with the township, because again, we've partnered on a joint Housing Light Plan that we shared with, with the staff and with the city council from, with Ryan Kilpatrick. I'm happy to take any questions. I do know that we have two different programs, I shouldn't say two different programs, but Lake Shore Habitat has CBGG funding that they're, that they've applied for, and the city is also applying for the same funding. It is income restricted. It is to assist with keeping folks in their home and how the plan, how the program is a, is a person applies to that program, and they ask for a number of fixes that could be done with their house, and then the city coordinates a contractor to come by and do all the work. So this is usually, this is something that's done with Lake Shore Habitat, and the city will also be applying for these funding. We'll be having that public hearing at our next meeting on September 15th.
Any questions for Kate?
I have a question.
Yes.
I know that you said that Dwelling Place is in process, in the process, but... I know that you said, can you hear me now? I know that you said that Dwelling Place is in process, and they're going to be reaching out or having some type of get-together or something in October, but other than that, what else do we have?
With Dwelling Place?
No, with housing, with affordable housing. I heard you say something about the township.
Yeah, the township has at least one MISHTA project that I'm aware of that has been approved, and I know that they have other market rate plans that have been approved. Also, the township has reverted, we've reverted that parcel next to the senior services, and that's going to be a MISHTA project as well. So they have at least two MISHTA projects. One has been approved, one is in the process of going through their planning commission, and then they have a number of market rate housing developments that have been approved.
Okay, so can, because I know people probably don't want to ask, but can you kind of explain what is MISHTA and what is market rate?
Sure. MISHTA stands for the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, and they are the entity that will be handling all requests for housing grants and/or loans through that department. They coordinate with other state agencies, like the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. They coordinate with Eagle on certain things, but they also have a lot of in-house things that they do when they review applications. They have many different housing programs. Some of them do not run the same time every year, and the MISHTA LI-Tech program, our low-income tax credit program, they tend to look at these programs every two years and make adjustments so that they're being fair amongst regions, amongst urban and rural places, and making sure that they're disseminating those funds around the state equally as best they can. Was there a second question or a second part that I forgot?
I said MISHTA and market rate.
Ah, yes, market rate. Market rate pretty much is what is the market going to bear when it comes to rent. There's subsidization, so someone, somewhere, some, some program is paying for assistance with, with rent, or it is market rate, and that's what the market will bear. So if the market will fetch $1,500 a month in rent, then that's what people can charge. The idea with using some kind of subsidization is that you're trying to keep people's rental or housing income or housing expenses to 30% of their income.
Okay, so, and this is my last question. With the, there was just something recently that the president passed where if you have been on Section 8 for two years, you're going to be cut off within the next, I think between 30 and 90 days. How's that going to affect South Haven, do you know?
I'm not sure. Section 8 is a voucher system that is given to each housing commission authority, so the number of housing commission vouchers you have for Section 8, I think, is set by either, somehow through the Housing Commission, which is a federal agency that oversees that. That's where they get their funding from. I'm not entirely sure how that's going to affect, but that's something I can look into with Director Gill.
Well, the reason, and I know I'm doing a lot of talking about it, but the reason I'm asking is because I'm just thinking about this and how this is going to affect a number of people, and where are they going to go? Because we have no housing, what are they going to do, and how can the city try to remedy the problem? You know, because I have seen, I've heard from students that are homeless, I've heard from other people in the community who are homeless, I've heard from people who are becoming homeless, and it just seems like we have nothing, so that's why I'm asking the question, because if that really goes through what the president is pushing, I can already foresee that there's going to be a lot of more homeless people here in the city of South Haven.
And, and my understanding is that they have a waiting list that they're working off of, so that would be very unfortunate to take people out of those homes.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to echo support for Letitia's thoughts on the Section 8 housing, to see if, if that is going to impact our residents and try to get a handle on some proactive alternatives before it did happen, so I'd love to kind of keep tabs on that. And then, I was just wondering if it's possible at some point to sit down, I don't know whether it'd be a workshop, a meeting, something else, but I know with our master plan redo coming up, housing being a priority for the council, and just the current economic climate locally and further abroad and further away from here, it'd be kind of nice to sit down and have like, some kind of concrete plan for other housing options, some things that we've talked about before with Ryan Kilpatrick, that could, like maybe making those more concrete, actionable steps that we could take with some kind of, like this is going to be our three-year plan or five-year plan to get, we want to build or make available 100 more housing units, you know, something like that, that's very concrete to work toward. I would just love for us, as a council and as a community, to make something like that happen. That's all.
Thank you. Mary?
Yeah. I also want to echo the, the need to identify how we could be impacted by the Section 8. It'd be good to have a count, if that's even feasible. And I was just curious, how much of the EPA grant money has been spent? I believe we got $300,000 that the BRA is administering. People can apply to help for brownfield cleanup, and, you know, do applications go to BRA, and how is it decided who gets what?
It is not to do the cleanup, it's just for testing. So we don't believe we've received an application yet, but yes, that EPA grant is out there. My understanding is that the Dwelling Place will be utilizing some of those funds for additional testing.
Thank you. Any other questions, George?
Yeah, please relate to Michael that I thought this was a really good report, and there was a lot of stuff in here. I didn't realize what was going on in housing, so that was good. One thing, I think that's came out after Michael's report, the Michigan Municipal League just issued something on housing that I thought had a lot of good potential to it, and I know we can't necessarily do much, other than maybe we could consider doing doing like a resolution or something in support of that effort. So, I do realize there is a lot of effort in housing, because a lot of people do realize that is a big problem. And so, I appreciate all that is in this report and all that we can do also going forward.
Appreciate that, George. Now, we'll lay those sentiments to Michael. I did say, I did also see that email about, I think it's called the My Place, and this is a proposal for legislation that's going to the legislature, but I don't believe it's been passed, but maybe resolution support. We'll look into that and see if that's something we can do.
Thank you. Okay, next, Sid. Oh, go ahead.
Just hard to see down here. I think we all can agree that housing is an issue in this town, and we need more housing for all types of people, whether they be senior, low-income, or workforce. There seems to be a lot of moving parts, and I'm going to just touch on a few of them. And my frustration is, we don't have any one person taking all these moving parts and trying to put together a cohesive plan to attack all of them in one plan to help the city. So, here's just a few. We have Overton we all know about. We have properties in this town, a lot of lots that are available that we could put duplexes on, but we don't have the zoning yet for. As you mentioned, we have Habitat, who told me personally and told you that they want to come to this town and help us, and they can build homes at a lot lower cost. And then, we have a township with more land that's more affordable. So, there's four big areas, and I don't know if right now we have a person or persons who can put together, again, a cohesive plan to put it all together, so as a city, we can go forward. Then, we have things like a land trust, which dwelling could possibly do, where people, and most people may not know this, but you buy the home, but the land trust buys the property, the home sitting on, and you can only sell at the rate of inflation. It's a great way for young people to get equity in a home. So, they seem like they're the experts in it, but we're not moving on that. Then, we talked about Mishta, and then we talk about land redevelopment and pricing. So, my bottom line is this. We have all these moving parts. How can you, Kate, put together a plan or a person that can put all of this together, that has the experience, that has the know-how to do it? I talked to Jim Hedinger today, and he says that that's not what he can do at his stage in life, and he thinks we need someone. But he did not say we need an Economic Development Manager. I'm not trying to support or dispel it. I just think we need someone in the city or people to put all of this together. Occasionally, residents will stand up at City Council and say, "We'd like to do this, and we have some really talented people." What do you, how do you see us going forward with all these different issues?
Well, I think we've been trying to keep a pulse on so many different programs that are available and trying to understand how they fit in with the current matrix of what we do have. I think there's a lot of moving parts in it, and some of them can't be done by just one person. As we already know, we have to talk with CHASA. We have to talk with Public Works. We have to talk with a number of different entities, because they all have something to do with the cost of the build. Now, we have investigated a number of things, such as purchasing land that's coming up for tax sale from the county, and we've been talking about that with our City Attorney's Office. So, we have a number of initiatives that we're thinking about, but as for one person, I think it's myself and Michael. So, myself and Michael are pretty much the ones who spearhead this, because this is a council priority. Quite frankly, this is what I should be spending my time mostly on, not only managing a staff of up to 150 people, but this is a council priority, and this is a big one.
And Habitat for Humanity came to South Haven, and they looked at three vacant parcels, and then they didn't get back to us. I know there's been a change in their leadership, but I, the feeling I got was Habitat for Humanity is looking for land that will be donated to them.
That would be what?
Donated. Like if a church wants to donate land to them.
Or a person?
What?
And a person?
Yeah.
Anyway.
So, those are options that we're looking at. Is, they are looking for lots. I know, I do know there's a couple of lots that we've looked at at the south end, because the Housing Commission has stated they need a need. They have a need for more housing development. So, we have a number of different people that have come to talk to us about housing, and we're just trying to work through the tangle of what that entails to get done.
So, back to what the mayor said about Habitat and donations. I don't know about that. They didn't say that to me, but they did tell me, and we all know it, in Holland, I think it's 42 homes they're developing, a whole community. And what they said was, "We like to do more than one home at a time. We like to do developments, and we have land in our township." And again, I'm just repeating myself. We need someone to kind of take this and see if we can put it together and get the township involved, so we can put together a cohesive plan, putting all these parts together. And I don't know the answer, but we need somebody who can do it, and I don't know who that is. Do you feel we have the personnel in the city to be able to do this?
Well, we've really, we've had, we've hired a few people. We've moved some things around. I think it's a work in progress, but again, the things that have to be done aren't necessarily, it's either finding the money that, you know, we have, there's funding, there's budgeting, right? But when you say find township property, well, who is, you know, the township doesn't own that much property, so we're talking with a private homeowner, and then what's that purchase price? And then, you have to align with a developer, and many times, developers are looking for some kind of incentive package. There's a community land, there's a land bank here in Van Buren County. The county also has a brownfield authority. I happen to know the chair. It's me. But we also have an authority, we have brownfield authority here in the city. So, we have a number of tools that are helpful, but they're not, the tools sometimes need some finessing.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. It's now time for public comment for citizens in the audience to discuss items not on the agenda, and you have up to five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dan Williamson. The kids around here know me as Dr. Bailey, but I'm here to speak on behalf of the museum and as Chair of the Board of Trustees. First of all, in 1938, when the museum was purchased by Bailey's roommate's widow and given to the city, yes, it was Michigan Agricultural College, now MSU, Go Green, except when playing the maze in blue, our Bailey's roommate gave the house and the last two acres of backwoods to the city of South Haven as a memorial to Liberty Hyde Bailey, and everything he did to make the Holy Earth, one of his books, a better place in his time and hopefully forever. As some of you know, we had a windstorm in early June. By a few degrees on the compass when the wind blew that Thursday evening, Friday morning, the museum was almost totally destroyed, but it was spared by those few degrees of the wind shifting to the east. It destroyed the gardens, but we were able to rebuild them in time, hosting the garden clubs, garden walk. By the grace of the Bailey spirits, the house was saved. It missed the house. It crashed the gardens. The bottom line is, we're very happy that here we are, early September. The work to restore the damage to the museum and house is 95% completed and repainted, and will be finished soon, weather permitting, because you can't paint in the rain outdoors. So, we thank the City Council, the city staff, and the departments involved for helping put this together and fund the restoration and painting, including, of course, the citizens and the taxpayers. We'd like to invite everybody. We're going to have a repainting, uncloaking party coming up soon, and we'll publish that when all the stuff is done. It's coming up soon, and then everybody can come see our new exhibit, Dr. Bailey's. When I went to Chicago in 1872, one year after the Great Fire in 1871, when he and two cohorts got permission to go to Chicago on a ship from Ludwig's Pier, now known as Pilgrim Haven, because Ludwig owned the property down there and built a pier, he said, "People will come here and get in and out of my pier much quicker." That's part of history in South Haven. Anyway, we've also started on our next exhibit, presenting a history of West Michigan and the indigenous peoples before us. More information will be coming, but as a teaser, some of our artifacts at the museum have been dated by an anthropology professor to be from 1,000 to 10,000 BCE. That's 3,000 to 13 years ago, a very long time ago. So, we're working with other indigenous peoples, other groups, to make this our next really wonderful exhibit to talk about how important in the world West Michigan was and still is. Some of you know, every Friday morning at 8:20, I'm on Bailey Moment with Paul Landdecker on Cozy 103.7. Last Friday was 117 Bailey Moments on the radio. They're on Spotify, and they're on our website, and every time, every week, I get to learn something new to share with the public, and it's been a wonderful experience for me. And when I see people around town-
You have one minute.
Who say, "Oh, it's Dr. Bailey." Yep, of course. Other than that, thanks again for the support and the payment to fix the museum. We're trying to get approval to rotate our monthly story walks here at Elkenberg Park. And with that, thanks again to everyone, and I hope you all have a great week, and thank you for the opportunity and the funding for the museum.
Thanks, Dan. Anybody else? If not, we're moving on to City Managers' comment. Oh.
Jill Wilkins, 87, Indiana Street. I just want to quickly comment on, first, I want to thank Kate and the staff for bringing this out to Elkenberg Park. I think what would have made it a lot better if we could have had a line item on the agenda that actually gave us an update on Overton. That project is very important to a lot of people, especially those that live on the south side of Ward 1. It's very important that we get housing off the ground. I heard a lot of talk, a lot of discussion, but it's the same old stuff that we hear all the time. And I've stood here constantly asking for the staff to identify who the stakeholders are and have them come here to this meeting and offer up what they have in plan to help resolve this issue that we're facing in South Haven. Councilwoman Wilkins kind of hit on a point I want to talk about, about the homeless rate. We're constantly getting calls from current students that are homeless, students that know her, that are still reaching out to her. That's very disturbing and sad. That number is growing. We watched a documentary last night on the homeless problem in Massachusetts, which is the highest homeless rate in this, in this country. And you can't watch a documentary like that and not feel sad for those, especially with winter coming around the corner. So, I want the city to really do a better effort in trying to get this project off the ground. Now, I'm hearing from this council that we really don't know if we need an economic developer. Two, three years ago, we were strong on, "We need that, we need that." Today, we don't even know if we need an economic developer. So, it's hard to really grasp. Are we moving forward, or we're going backwards? And so, yeah, a lot of talk, but I'm not seeing a lot being done in regards to helping those that are being out misplaced, don't have a place to stay. And that number is growing, not because, and there's no fault to the homeowners, but we are getting a homeless rate, numbers added to that homeless rate, because there are those that are looking to benefit from STRs, thinking that when the next council come on board, they're going to lift that cap. And so, some people are being placed, moved, I mean, evicted or told they had a certain amount of time to move, because they want to take advantage of the next council people that's coming on board. So, I want to, I want to, you know, say to the residents, please make sure that when you vote, make sure your candidate is clear. Make sure you're clear, or at least the candidate is clear on the position they take when it comes to STRs. And so, because that is just adding to the problem in some ways as well. And so, that's my take on it tonight. I heard a lot, but I just want us to really try to do what we can do to, you know, Mayor Brown, that you ran on that. You said you would identify every parcel in South Haven and get houses on those parcels. We're two years in, and nobody has done anything with these empty parcels. We heard before that the township had plenty of land. Now, I heard tonight that the township don't have that much land. So, you know, I'm just trying to get some consistency when we're trying to nail. We get reports. The report you just got today, all that stuff sounds good, but nothing's happening to really resolve the issue. Again, I told you last meeting that there's three groups. I think Reeser, Councilman Reeser mentioned it. We have, we need low-income housing. Bri Hill has ran to the ground. We need more buildings like that that will identify, or at least those that are low-income-
You have one minute.
You can, that needs in that area. We need workforce housing, and we need, well, we seem like we're getting the senior need off the ground with the complexes getting ready to go up. But there are three areas of issues, lack that we need to face, and that is low-income, workforce housing, and seniors. If we can do that and make a sincere effort, besides just talking, that will help. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, the city has identified the vacant lots in the city? I don't know. First step was identifying the vacant lots. Anybody else?
Erin Cobb, 914 Center Street, South Haven. I heard you mention something about Habitat. Now, Habitat, I don't know what they do now, but I was on the board for a few years, 20-some years ago. Habitat, and they had another organization called Housing Development Corporation. They was an extension of South Haven Housing Commission. So, HTC built them two houses right there. One of them was donated land. I sold them two lots, 956 Center Street, no, 960 Center Street, and a lot up on the corner of, by Elkenberg, Center and Elkenberg, Center and Elwood. Now, Habitat at the time, Habitat wouldn't pay over $7,000 for a lot. I don't know what they're paying now, and I don't think you'd get a lot in South Haven for $7,000 anymore. I don't know what they're paying now, but that's what they were paying then. They wouldn't pay over $7,000. I know for a fact, because I was on the board, and I know people that sold lots to them. As a matter of fact, I sold two to HTC. And so, South Haven, we need, we really need some affordable houses. We need houses, because there's no affordable houses in South Haven, what we call affordable, that the average $15 an hour can afford. But the question is, what we going to do about it? The thing of it is, I think the city, the council, and everybody that concerned, we need to sit down, put our head together, and because we can't do nothing, one pulling this way and one pulling that way. The city and they will come together like that. I want to see this city. I want to say this. I know election coming up. I want to see the candidates work together. If only one candidate can win, you know that. No matter how good both of you are, only one of you going to win. So, when the one wins, the one that wins, work with the one that lost, and the one that lose, work with the one that wins, because that's the only way you're going to get anything done. Because if I'm running for office, and you run for office, you have good- Because if I'm running for office, and you run for office, you have good ideas, I have good ideas. I win, you lose, and you take your ideas and don't share them because you lost. The whole city done lost. But if we come together with ideas, even though we lose, we can change this city. All the way this city will ever change, we have to work together. I've been here a long time. Sometimes I feel like I've been here too long. Because, you know, when you've been in one place 50 years, doing the same thing 50 years, and all of a sudden you get a ticket for parking there, when you parked there 50 years, you feel like you've been there too long sometime. But I have seen this city work together, I seen them work apart, and they do greater work when they come together. I have seen councils, I used to go to council meeting all the time, back 30 years, 25 years ago, when I was buying, we were buying a lot of property, we always owned a lot of property here, but sold most of it. And I know what this city can do when they come together. And when the council come together and work together, you're going to disagree on something, but don't leave angry at each other. Come together and work together. And we can get some affordable houses here, I believe we can, but we have to work together. That's the only way anything will ever change in this city, or do it, or work for the good in this city-
You have one minute.
-is that we work together. No matter who wins the election, work with the other. One that lost. Because both of you have good ideas, both of you had to have good ideas to be good to get where you are.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Darlene Baden, and I live at 1054 Center Street. I just wanted to know if you, I didn't hear you say what two lots you identified.
What did she ask? She's asking what lots were identified.
Oh, Kate.
We've got a whole map, so it's hard for me to say, like, laying them all off, but some of them are vacant because they're industrial, there's many different classifications, industrial, commercial, and residential. So we've got a pretty wide map. Some of them are going to be appropriate, and some of them aren't. Like, we have cemetery property that's been flagged on that. We're obviously not going to be building residential in the cemetery, but there's a pretty large map.
So how will we know?
How will we know what?
What they are, where they are, what, when will you choose, or, I mean, you just dropped us off with, "I identified two properties. Are they worthy, or are they not, or are we going to move forward on them?"
Yes, I think that we're looking at and seeing what we can do with them, and what is the manner that we would take ownership of them.
And then the other thing I have to say is, I just want to make a statement. I don't know if you guys realize it or not, but you're making it extremely expensive to reside here in South Haven. And I think at some point, we ought to have a discussion about that, too.
Thank you. If there's nobody else, we'll move on to city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor. We did not have an update from the police chief or Public Works today, but we will be following up with that later on. But I did get an update from interim chief DeBoer. He is advising folks to lock your doors on your cars. We've had a couple car thefts, and we've had a lot of cars being, well, they're not broken into because they're not locked, but keep your keys, lock your cars. This is the time of year that we're having a number of car thefts, so that's one update that I've gotten from Adam. If you were here earlier, we did have our new leaf truck, so thank you, council, for approving that. It's been, was down here, we had a look at it. Very excited to have that up and running for our leaf collection, it'll probably start here in the next couple weeks. Meetings in the park are a little, do take a lot of work, as you can tell, and it takes a lot of time and setup. So I really want to give my staff a lot of kudos and thanks. This was pretty much all hands on deck. We had IT, PD, Shays, parks, streets, we had department heads down here. Attorney Dave was cooking some hot dogs, so hopefully everyone got a few of those. I just want to really shout out to my staff, they are an amazing group of people, and we can't do it without them. Lastly, lastly, speaking of the volunteerism of this community, Shays had their pancake breakfasts last Sunday. My understanding is that I believe they've netted about $5,800, so that was very well done. Kudos to all their staff and their volunteers that came out to help. It's something that they do for this community, and they're using those proceeds to fundraise for a new electronic sign to give more updates to the community. Those are my comments.
Thank you. We'll take five minutes for questions. Mary.
Yeah. Kate, I was asked about parking on Newcombe easement. It appears this past weekend, especially golf carts go in and park on private property when they do not belong to the private people who own there, and when the one golf cart came out, almost got hit by another car. It's just not safe in egress. What can be done about that?
It's not an easement, the city owns that property. So this was done many, many decades ago, I think in the '30s, and then I think there were some updates in the '50s. So that is property that's owned by the city. I believe that we have no parking signs out there. If we don't have those signs, we can easily put them out. But both of those homeowners are sharing a drive that is actually owned by the city.
Okay.
And I think you had asked if there was a plan for that property. There isn't. The only thing we know about that's going in there is that there's been a bench, a memorial bench, that's been asked to put in.
Okay. And are we still having the DHS meeting on the 13th?
We are.
And when will we get the information before that meeting to review it?
I'm not sure.
Will it be before the meeting?
I'm not sure.
So we may have nothing to prepare to review before that meeting?
I don't have any details for you.
Okay. And then yesterday, the north end was interrupted with a bulldozer, contrary to the demolition permit, or at least to the specifications. So what is the city doing to make sure that people doing construction do not operate on days when they're not supposed to, like Sundays and holidays?
We usually, we respond to those. I was a little surprised that Van Buren County Dispatch told you that they would not send an officer out, because we have sent off, they have sent officers out before, so I'm not entirely sure. I did call the contractor and asked him what was going on. There was a miscommunication because they were not aware, at least from my conversation, was that they were, they had any work planned. So that's what I know right now.
Okay, because I've, several people have talked to me and were not happy about having their Labor Day interrupted. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Mayor and councilperson's comments. Letitia.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Those are my comments.
George.
Thank you again, city staff, for bringing us out here and giving us the chance to have a little change of venue. It's very nice, and I know it takes a lot of work on city staff. Thank you also to everyone that came out today. I just wanted to talk briefly about housing. And one of the things I've learned, I've tried to learn a lot about housing, but I wanted to talk about the five Ls of housing. And when you think about everything that is affecting housing, you'll realize there's a lot of headwinds that we have to go against in order to do new housing. The first L is land. So we're limited in land, land is getting more expensive, that makes it difficult for housing. Lending. Interest rates are high right now. Everyone that has to get a mortgage right now, try to buy up land or property or a house, that is going to be more expensive. Another headwind, laws. Now, we've done some improvements in our zoning ordinance, and we're looking to do some more after the master plan is updated, but laws is another big headwind that we have to go against in order to get housing. Labor is the fourth L, and that is also proving to be more difficult. We've lost a lot of people since 2008 that do build houses, and it just gets more and more difficult to find the proper labor for housing. And the last L is lumber. As you know, the cost of everything is going up, lumber especially is going up. It's another headwind we have to go against, so it's really a difficult situation, but I think the city is working what it can do to improve the housing situation. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Joe?
I'd like to thank all the people that came out tonight, especially those, as I'm looking out, have normally, that normally don't come to city council. It's nice to see all of you. I hope you enjoyed it, and I would invite you, please, come back to city councils. This is your city, and I always say this, you are our boss. We report to you at city council. The city staff reports to you. So please, tell us what you want and come to the meetings. The second thing, based on what George is saying, yeah, housing is very difficult, and we can sit here and talk for hours all the problems and obstacles. I do think that one issue that this city council has always come together on, and it's trying to create housing in this town. I have not seen any heated discussions. It's all about, how can we do this? And I think this "how" is the difficult part. For me, I don't know how to put all these pieces together, and I don't know who does know how, but we got to find it, and I would challenge the city staff to come up with a plan, how we can actually put all the moving parts together, and listen to the residents what they want, and then come with a cohesive plan, because it's not easy. George outlined all the obstacles. We got to figure out how to overcome all of them. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes, I want to also thank everyone for coming tonight and the staff for having set this up. I know they've been working a long day today, because I was through the area earlier. I echo Councilman Reeser's comments about, we are here for you, and we're so glad to see you out today. We don't usually see as many people at city council, and we welcome you there. We do want to hear from you. And as Aaron Cobb said, we need to listen to all ideas, and sometimes one idea leads to another idea. And that's all about communications, listening with an open mind, embracing new ideas and different thoughts, because one idea could be the seed to a bigger idea that will help us get to our end goal. And in order to do that, we do need a plan. And I look forward to having things come through, through the master plan, which is coming up, and also just our community being embraced and coming to us with your ideas, because we just, we need to hear new ideas to find new paths forward. Also, I want to give a shout out, and sorry, these are bifocals. Also, Shays did a great job on Sunday. I saw a lot of people go through drive-through, and at one point in time, there was no seating room left. So thank you for everyone who came out to support Shays. And also, a big shout out for the Jazz Festival, which will be September 12th and 13th downtown. It's free, they do go by donations, but please come out, enjoy, enjoy our community and everything that we provide to you. So thank you.
Wendy?
I also want to say thanks to everyone for coming out. It's awesome to see some new faces, and much like the others have said, we hope to see you again and hear from you. We appreciate you being here. I loved, especially, hearing the kids play in the background, that was a lot of fun. And then, just to go back a few steps to when Mary was asking about the lifeguard report, I do think if there's anything that we can have in our hands that would help us prior to the September 13th meeting, it'd be awesome to be able to look at that. So I just wanted to support her request for that. And I think that's it for me. Thanks for being here.
Going to sound like a broken record, but thanks, everyone, for coming, and thanks to city staff, the IT department, the police department, DPW, and Shays. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Yes, thanks to everybody. Great to see you, great to be here. Tonight's cupcakes are in honor of our clerk, Megan Keiker's birthday, which was yesterday. So, thank you. She's amazing. So thank you for everything you do for us. The cupcakes from Biddy Cakes were donated by Cindy Compton, so thank you, Cindy. Next time you see her, you can thank her. I want to thank Matt Day and the beach patrol team and everybody who worked together to make sure we had another safe summer on our beaches. They did an excellent job. And I'm going to save my other comment when Michael's back in town. So thank you, everybody. If there's, oh, I guess we're done. If there's no further business, we're adjourned.